All right, well, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order here in a second, but I just was reminded a second ago that I needed to silence my phone, so I figured I might remind you in the audience that you might want to consider doing that as well, as well as those of us on the dais. I'm looking to my right here. Anyway, so we'll call Gardner City Council to order. Would in join, I would invite everyone to stand and join us in the vlog. Let's each him to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item this evening is a presentation proclaiming the month of July 2015 as National Parks and Recreation Month. This July, the nation is celebrating 30 years of Park and Recreation Month. And in Gardner, our Parks Department is one of the jewels of the city, so this gives me great pleasure to make this proclamation. Whereas, park and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Gardner, Kansas, and whereas in 1985, the U.S. House of Representatives designated as National Park and Recreation Month, designated July as National Park and Recreation Month, and whereas our park and recreation facilities, programs, and events are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region, and whereas park and recreation programs build healthy and active communities, aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas park and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas provide improved water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, provide vegetative buffers to development, improve the quality of the air we breathe, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for the children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chris Morrow, Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month. And I just can't say enough nice things about the Park Department. We won the Blue Chip Award, was that last year or this year?
Yes, sir, last year.
Last year, which was only four cities in the state won that, won that award, and Adriana Hollerprick from the Aquatic Center was recognized last year as well for the excellence of our Aquatic Center. So I'm going to present this to Jeff. Thanks, you, and thank all your staff for all the great work that you've done. We sure appreciate it.
Appreciate it, man.
And yeah, if you could share a couple of words, and actually you've got a microphone seat to begin to salvage your time.
Excellent. Well, really on behalf of an excellent team of experienced and knowledgeable and dedicated professional staff, it's certainly a pleasure to serve this community and 130, 140 events and programs and multiple parks and recreation facilities that are offered to our citizens and the visitors. Have a lot of pride in what they do, and it's a pleasure, and it's certainly rewarding seeing all the happy faces that we have and how we touch everyone's lives. So I appreciate the time and the recognition of this, and certainly we'll share this with the rest of our team.
Well, give them a good ad a boy for us. We're having a special meeting this evening because last weekend, last Monday, the weather conditions were less than optimal for getting a roomful of people together to have a meeting. So one of the victims off of the presentations is the presentation of the comprehensive, oh shit, the CAPER Annual Financial Report. I knew it had come to me. They'll be back next week to present that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Which takes us to presentation item number three, and this is the presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And, you know, we get used to Laura standing at the podium and Dottie Riley being here and Bruce Kimmel being here and them talking about how they're saving us tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars on refinances, and or winning awards year after year for the CAPER. And this year, and for the first time that any of us that are sitting up here were involved, they're winning the Distinguished Budget Award this time. And this award reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, including in their policy document, financial plan, operation guide, and communication devices, and 14 other mandatory criteria within those categories to receive this award. There's only 1,400 cities that get these, and not that many in Kansas, but certainly some in Johnson County. And I say all that so that I can actually, I'm gonna get up and come around, we've got recognition for the person that's presenting the 2015 budget, which is City Administrator Cheryl Harrison Lee, and then something that's presented to the city, and I'm certainly going to want to talk or mention some of the people that are involved in this process behind the scenes, including Laura Gorley, Nancy Tornadon, I see you back there Nancy, Jackie Schultz, Billy Weaver, Debbie Goodson, Kim Garrison, and Matthew Fox. I know you all played no small part in this, and I know that your entire department should take pride in it. And with that being said...
Matt?
It's with great pride that I presented this award to you Cheryl for the GFOA Certificate of Recognition for Budget Preparation. I want to thank you for all of your hard work in that, and we've also got Budget Presentation Award. I'm gonna go ahead and hand over here to you.
With all the red?
Come on. Yeah.
Not the Stanley Cup, but it's cool.
No. The Stanley Cup would be cool, though. Let's look at the media.
Thank you.
All right. Very welcome. You know, presentation item number two is presentation of a distinguished budget for 2015, and we'll move on to presentation item number three, which is the presentation of the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. Laura Gorley, good evening and welcome to the podium.
Thank you. I feel a lot of pressure now, Lord. Okay, so, as you know, a key component of priority-based budgeting is that evaluation and monitoring component. So before we get into the budget presentation, I think this is the perfect time to review the 2015 budget, mid-year budget highlights. So before I get started, there's a couple of things that you should know. For one, revenues and expenditures do not occur evenly throughout the year in any of the city's funds. So we'll start with the general fund summary, and this is numbers as of June 30, we're halfway mark, 50% of the budget, so we're benchmarking against the 50%. As you know, because if you're a mortgage holder, your property tax is due in May, and the county collects that for us, so by now, the city has received pretty much all the annual taxes they're going to, the bulk of it. So when that says property tax zero, well, first of all, revenues are at 66% of the budget, and these are the drivers. Property tax zero does not mean we didn't get any, it means square up on projections. If you got within $1,300, that's square up. Motor vehicle taxes running at 5.6% over, or if that equates to about $23,000. And then before I talk about city and county sales and use, I need to remind you that the sales and use tax, there's a two-month lag from point of sale to when we get our money. So even though this is June 30th, we're, this is only sales through April, so really we don't know anything about this, however, we do the best we can. So right now, city sales taxes running at 2.4% above the 50% mark, or $34,000. County sales pretty much square up, $9,000 off. City use, 5.8%, equates to $23,000. County use, 5.8% over, equates to just short of $18,000. So as you can see, any shortfalls are more than covered by the big drivers of this, of the excesses. And then expenditures overall in the general fund are at 43% of the budget. So as I said, revenue is at 66% of the budget in the general fund. Last year at this time, when we did the mid-year review, it was at 65. Expenditures overall at 43, last year 46. So all that being said, what I'm saying to you is both revenue and expenditures are pretty much behaving as budgeted. Water fund, same thing, 50% of the year completed, revenues are at 45% of the budget, but in the utility fund, the usage is only through May. So the summer usage is not included yet, because it takes us a while to read the meters, bill the meters, and then collect. And expenditures overall are at 56% of the budget. However, overall expenditures at 56 is actually artificially high in the water fund, because in the beginning of the year, we have budgeted transfers, and we make those at 100% at the beginning of the year. So that kind of drives the overall expenditures up to artificially high. The operating expenditures at 36% are the most accurate representation of budget to actual, because it doesn't include anything about transfers or capital projects. So all that being said, revenue is at 45% of the budget, last year you were at 46. Overall expenditures, 56% of the budget, last year 53. Operating expense, 36, last year 32. Both expenditures and revenues are behaving as budgeted for the water fund. Waste water fund, revenues are at 50% of budget, usage is probably not exactly the right word for wastewater, but let's go with usage, through May is just like the others, it's only through May, not the summer months. Expenditures are at 70% of budget, again, operating expenditures are a more accurate representation, the same thing applies to wastewater. Any transfers are done at the beginning of the year, it drives it artificially high. So operating expenditures are at 42%. So the comparison, revenue at 50% of the budget, last year 49. Overall expenditures, 70% of budget, last year 69. Operating expenditure is 42% of budget, last year we were only at 33, but 42 is still less than the 50% mark. So we're pretty much behaving as budgeted. Electric fund, this one's a little bit different, again, very important for the electric fund, revenues do not include summer usage. In the electric fund, the budget and the reporting structure are a little different than the water and sewer fund, because the electric fund does not have that separate development fund from which we pay debt. Electric fund's reporting structure does include debt payments, which we pay the principal or the largest portion at the end of the year, towards August and October. So the electric fund's actual budget comparison is artificially low in the first part of the year, because debt service is included in the overall reporting. All that being said, revenue is at 47% of budget, expenditures are at 39%, like I said, artificially low. Operating expenditures, 40% of budget, so last year's comparisons, revenue at 47, last year 45. Overall expenditures, 39 this year, last year 36. Overall expenditures, 40%, exactly the same as last year, 40%. So both revenues and expenditures behaving as budgeted. You might be wondering, after you read your budget book and your budget message, why the water and wastewater funds aren't also artificially known now that we've consolidated the development funds into their respective current funds? But remember, the consolidation doesn't happen till the 2016 budget. So we talk about it, but it doesn't happen till January. So we budgeted in 15 in those development funds, we'll spend out of 15 in those development funds because of the budget authority, and then we'll transfer what's left. So all that being said, everything's behaving as planned, evaluated and monitored, I don't see any large cause for concern, nothing material, everything looks pretty good. So that concludes the mid-year review of actual to budget for 2015. So now, I'm here to present the City Administrator's Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2015-16, so what we're saying is the 2015 estimate, the 2016 budget. The theme of this year's City Administrator's Recommended Budget is growth by choice or by chance, because the focus of this year's budget is to deliberately facilitate economic opportunities through infrastructure development and asset management. We aren't waiting for the growth to happen by chance, we're working our plans to drive This is our third year budgeting, developed using the priority-based budgeting model, which is a leading practice for local government. It's a multi-year planning process that is results-based, which means that the funds are allocated to achieving the identified goals that have been prioritized by the governing body. As shown in steps seven and eight, which is monitoring results and adjusting as needed, priority-based budgeting monitors and evaluates the accountability and results for the funding that we allocated to support the governing body's strategic goals, and it makes adjustments if needed. So we ask, if we didn't hit our goals, why not? As the environment changed, do we need to adjust the assumptions, or the tactics, or maybe the initiatives? There are two key things that make priority budgeting a best practice. Step one, stakeholder input, and step eight, adjust as necessary, or basically that's continuous process improvement. As we continue to progress to a high-performance organization, our efforts to continuously enhance citizen engagement are essential. So the mayor has decreed a triple-C approach to make the governing body and the citizens' vision for the community a reality by using collaboration, communication, and civic engagement. This year, the focus to develop the 2016 budget was on step one, stakeholder input. We heard our citizens say that they want to be more involved, so for the first time, the citizen input was moved to the very front of the budget process. The city held a citizens' budget forum in January and a citizens' CIP workshop in February. For the first time, governing body was, developed their input was also moved to the front of the process, and in March, you were asked for your proactive policy decisions to develop this budget instead of reacting to it at the end of the process and the budget recommendations. And for the first time, the completed budget book is out for review more than two weeks before the public hearing and nearly one full month before you approve it. So there were many collaborative, communicative, civic engagement events, henceforth referred to as triple-C, because that's hard to say, that provided different types of interaction with stakeholders to provide input and impact on the development of this budget. The citizens' opportunities including the aforementioned budget forum and CIP workshop, Gardner Youth Citizens Academy, and the Senior Building Rehabilitation Project Public Information Meeting. Additional input was also presented at the Economic Development Symposium, and from the Economic Development Task Force Assistance in developing that economic development incentive strategy. These were triple-C events where business industry experts, including financial advisors, bond counsel, developers, realtors, educators, and former elected officials who had engaged in some of the state's largest development projects, shared their experience and expertise with the governing body regarding their economic development policies and planning and funding decisions. Finally, city staff takes all this input and develops initiatives that support the governing body's strategic goals. So in review, the budget was developed with many meetings and presentations during the 2016 budget process that provided a great deal of information for the governing body to consider when determining the budget policy. In the January 20th council meeting, you had the presentation of the pavement assessment. January 22nd was the citizens' budget forum. February 2nd work session, you had the report from the citizens' budget forum. February 16th council meeting, the presentation of the utility assessments. February 23rd, citizens' CIP workshop. March 2nd council meeting, presentation of the law enforcement facility feasibility and space needs assessment. March 11th was the Economic Development Symposium where we had all the experience and the industry experts. March 16th work session, presentation and discussion of the economic development incentive policy and the advice from the task force that came with developing that. March 16th council meeting, presentation of the compensation study. March 23rd work session, we reviewed the 2014 budget and financial performance, and then that's the night that you gave your 2016 policy direction for this budget. April 20th, we adopted the economic development incentive policy, and that had impact on the budget. May 4th work session, second presentation and discussion of the compensation study. And at the May 4th council meeting, you had the EDC in the chamber come and present their 2014 and 15 accomplishments and their 2016 budget proposals. That's also the night that we renewed the Johnson County fire contract for '16, and that had impact on the budget because there was, they asked for additional money. May 18th work session, we talked about everything having to do with the special sales tax, the calendar, the eligible improvements, and you determined consensus to prepare for the election. Also had impact on the budget. June 1st council meeting, the city administrator presented the 2014-15 initiatives and the status update where they were about two-thirds completed already, and the fiscal year 2016 initiatives with the estimated cost. Tonight, you got your mid-year budget review, and I'm going through the recommended 2015-16 budget. On a side note, July 8th, the Gardner News contained the publication of budget hearing for the next week. So that little trip down memory lane illustrates that there were many opportunities for public input, and you dealt with a great deal of information that went into developing this budget. This does not show the budget development calendar that applied to city staff, but in case you care, it was all documented in the budget calendar that was contained in your budget message. So as I said before, and as we just went through, an important part of the budget cycle is to continue monitoring and evaluating per performance. So in March, we talked about the budget policy work session where we discussed how 2014 ended, and that we had strong 2014 end-of-the-year fund balances. So for the general fund and the utility funds, like I just went through, they still remain strong, even after including all of the proposed budget initiatives that we talked about on June 1st, and the improvements that were identified in the utility assessments. In March, we discussed the 2014 property tax revenues increased because last year's city valuation increased 5.7%. It increased again this year by another 7.4%. As stated in your budget message, this year's property valuation increase was captured in the debt service fund to close the funding gap caused by the delinquent special assessments and eliminate the need for mill levy increase for that fund. So, so you know, more evaluation and monitoring. Special assessment delinquency rate has risen to 34%, up from 20% last year. Still, that's almost all our one happy benefit district, that one bad benefit district with our friends who we will not name tonight, and two long delinquent parcels are still almost all of that. It is also a good time to note that the new tax-lid law will mitigate future property tax revenue resulting from valuation increases. There's a cap on that. So those are all just monitoring and evaluating stuff. We also discussed in March that sales tax revenues increased, and like I just said, through June, they're still continuing to increase. They're not as hot, but they are increasing still, and it's hard to say, well, we got information half a year that goes through April sales, that doesn't tell you anything about holidays or whatever. So now we get to what's in the recommended budget. The 2016 City Administrator's Recommended Budget is structurally sound, with strong reserves in both the general fund and the utility funds, as I've stated. That includes benefiting from 2.4 million in interest cost savings from refinancing over the last four years. The 2016 recommended budget demonstrates the value that you place on your employees through wage increases and increased health benefits. It addresses critical infrastructure needs and services to our residents while still maintaining the current mill levy and utility rates. It addresses the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city through our focus on economic As a reminder, the strategic goals that the governing body has determined, one of your most important policy guidance functions is to provide your vision for the city, and you use these strategic goals to guide your vision and filter your decisions for what projects and initiatives are funded in the annual budget. For those who are maybe listening, strategic goals are to promote economic development, improve the quality of life, fiscal stewardship, and infrastructure and asset management. Initiatives are the short-term actions and projects that support the governing body's long-term strategic goals. Initiatives are the mechanism through which the governing body's goals are implemented, and they ensure accountability by measuring the results that are achieved through the allocation of resources or the funding that is approved for the initiatives through the budget cycle. These are the initiatives as presented by City Administrator Harrison Lee on June 1st, and they are included in this budget. Please note, the only change since June 1st is to increase the number of police SUVs for the governing body's direction. So as I said earlier, the theme of the 2016 budget is growth by choice or by chance, because the focus is to further economic opportunities through infrastructure development and asset management. So essentially, the 2016 budget initiatives were prepared to implement the activity of previous years, including the utility assessments and the pavement assessments. This is just a review of the initiatives to show how they align with the strategic goals. So we have the EDC in the chamber funding, under promoting economic development, EDC in chamber funding, and then the infrastructure analysis, otherwise known as the capital improvement element, which is the 20-year look at the city's infrastructure. For improving quality of life and fiscal stewardship, basically there are targeted improvements for the city's infrastructure as documented in the recently completed utility assessment and pavement assessments. So as we discussed earlier this year, delays in implementation will lead to further degradation, and in some cases, that will result in additional cost to correct issues. So in order to achieve fiscal stewardship and maintain the quality of life, timely completion of those projects is essential. So we need to implement the utility assessments and implement the pavement management. So we need to implement the utility assessments and implement the pavement management plan. Under increased infrastructure and asset management, we have the public works parks facility need study. We talked about salt storage, the senior building rehabilitation project, which is CDB grants plus the city share of 50,000, and the Phase 2 merit and career ladders. We also talked about the golf course property master plan, the police SUVs, and the dump So, moving on to the next piece, staffing review. This is to recap the information that staff presented last year just to illustrate where we are in a staffing comparison as we position for growth. Only Gardner's information has been updated. So all of the others are exactly the numbers we showed you last year. Gardner's FTE count is what is in the recommended budget and it includes 31.5 utility positions. Some of these cities on this slide do not have utility positions, such as Prairie Village. As a point of reference, Gardner's 2014 population of 20,667 is an 8% increase just since 2010, which was actually still during the economic downturn. So preparing for growth, this slide illustrates where we need to be thinking about to be in the future. Again, only Gardner's employee count was updated and it does include our 31.5 utility employees. So as economic development activity increases and the city grows, we're still have a considerable staffing gap to plan for. Again, these cities do not have utilities except for Leavenworth, which provides sewer service. So for comparison, let's take out the utility employees. 107 Gardner nonutility positions for 20,667 people is 5.2 nonutility employees to serve every thousand people. The next largest city on that slide is Leewood, who is 57% larger than Gardner. They have 10.6 nonutility employees to serve every thousand people. So they're half again as big with twice as many employees. That's just something to keep in mind as economic development activity increases, as we were steamrolled during the last growth wave and that led to reactive decisions and a poor image in the business community. So it's better to be preparing for growth and you're doing your rebranding efforts of customer-focused and business-friendly to facilitate business attraction and retention. So we're deliberately planning and allocating resources to facilitate economic development so we should be thinking ahead of staffing comparisons like this. With all that being said, 2015 staffing reorganization, there are two changes shown in the utility-public works heading, which are a realignment of duties and they represent the city administrator's commitment and heightened emphasis on strengthening liaison relationship between utilities department and the finance department and it further supports the governing body's decision to reorganize all three utilities into one department. So that's moving the utility-public works administration to utility building specialists and re-leveling the accountant position to a senior accountant position. That's because finance already provides much of the information used by utilities for their required reporting to outside agencies. This reorganization strengthens the relationship between finance and utilities and facilitates our ability to assist utilities with automating their existing reporting processes and implementing best practices, such as the need for inventory controls, which you will hear more about next Monday when the auditors come, but it was already in your packet regarding need deficiency for inventory controls. The nonutilities reorganization shown here is to reclass three police officer positions to corporal positions. This change strengthens the leadership operations in the police department and increases our ability to continue our safe city ranking as the fifth safest city in Kansas. The net change on those things is net change zero. There are also three minor changes to the salary schedule that you received. The first two are housekeeping items. One was a scrivener's error. The fiscal service manager should have been in range eight instead of range seven. And one is just a position name change. The codes inspector should have been the codes compliance inspector. Third change is a classification change from contract and grant administrator in range seven to grant program coordinator in range six. This is because changing the focus of the job to grants will enable us to get a different candidate pool focused on grants and get busy leveraging our funds. These changes, along with whatever we get from you tonight and in the next few weeks and the public and any other minor changes from staff, will be reflected in the final version of the budget book that you will have before budget adoption night. For 2016, there is only one new position request and that's special events coordinator. Adding this position will enable us to grow and expand our special events such as music, art, and theater festivals, farmer's market, and other events that are not aimed at just the local community, but actually to become a leader in the region for special events and cultural arts and festivals. So dedicated focus on enhancing and expanding special events would encourage tourism and have a positive impact on the local economy and the image, which supports the governing body's strategic goals of promoting economic development and improving the quality of life. So the city administrator continues to monitor for staffing changes for increased efficiency and effectiveness that support your governing body's goals. She is still monitoring the need for the CIP manager and the zoning administrator, but is holding on those for now and will reevaluate those during the 2017 budget process. All of the staffing changes that we just reviewed for 15 and 16 result in one additional Utilities, let's talk about utilities. Water, the water fund. Water utility, capital improvement projects, and assessment items were included in the budget as they were presented to you in February. The water budget does include funds for line replacement. The water utility itself is robust, but water is subsidizing wastewater to offset potentially large rate spikes from many expensive sewer projects. So without the subsidy, we would likely have double-digit rate increases in the wastewater fund. We're going to come back to this subsidy in the fall and we'll just discuss it as part of the budget policy decisions that we'll be talking about later. It's not necessarily a bad thing, but we'll talk about it. As you recall, we just talked about the water development fund was consolidated into the water fund to better utilize cash reserves and eliminating the need for a rate increase while still absorbing the cost of the improvements identified in the utility assessment. And after all of these things, the projected 2016 end-of-year fund balance is good. Consequently, there is no recommended rate increase in the water fund. Wastewater fund, just like the water fund, the utility, CIP, and assessment items were included in the budget as presented in February. There is 4.2 million in CIP debt projects for the South List Storage Tank and to replace the ultraviolet system at 2.1 million each. These are 2016 projects, but the debt payments won't begin until the 2017 budget. So I just want you to know that they show up as 2016, but there's nothing going on in the budget yet. The wastewater budget does include funds for line and manhole replacement and like the water fund, the development fund was consolidated into the parent fund to better utilize cash reserves and eliminating the need for a rate increase even after taking on all the utility assessments. The projected 2016 end-of-the-year fund balance is good. There's no rate increase recommended in the wastewater fund. Electric fund, just like the others, CIP and assessments were included in the budget as presented in February. There is 1.1 million in CIP cash projects and they are detailed in CIP document, including land acquisition for Substation 4. There's a million dollars in debt for the transformer project that you approved earlier this year. With all that being, oh, and there is also no budgeted expenditures at all in the electric capital replacement reserve fund. All that being said, the projected end-of-the-year 2016 fund balance for the electric fund is good and there's no rate increase recommended for the electric fund. You guys caught that there is no rate increases at all this year. Did you catch that? I want to make sure you caught that. Did everybody out there catch that? There is no rate increases.
I was smiling and not to smirk.
Smile louder, I can't hear you.
Laura, I did have one question about the fund balances. Maybe we can go back to that later on, but you're talking about the fund balances being good. Do we happen to have any projected percentages?
Absolutely do.
As a percentage of?
Glad you asked that. The projected end-of-the-year, now remember, a utility benchmark is not 30% because utilities are 12. It's actually the recommended, which represents six weeks. Now, we're more than that. So our projected fund balance for water, 22%. Projected fund balance for wastewater, 23. A projected fund balance for electric, 23. So we're just fine.
Okay, thanks.
Oops, missed a flight. Okay, so let's talk about CIP. What's included in the 2015 and 16 budget?
I'm sorry, real quick, can we just go back to the fund balance issue? There is also, electric has a capital replacement.
Right.
And that's separate from the fund.
It is separate.
And that is funded, I believe, like 3 million dollars.
It's got 3 million dollars in it.
And the only difference between last year and what this year and what we're anticipating next year is interest in growing the.
A little teeny bit of interest. So that's all the activity in that fund at all. And we don't do a percentage run, what are you going to, I mean, fund balance is calculated as percentage of expenditures, but there isn't any expenditures. So it's just 3 million dollars, roughly.
Very good, thank you.
Yep. So let's go back to CIP, as what's included in the 2015-16 budget. As a reminder, a CIP program was presented to the governing body last year and it was presented to the citizens again in February. To be defined as a capital project, the project must exceed 25,000 in cost and be a non-recurring expense. Recurring items are budgeted in maintenance, in the operating budget, I'm sorry, and things such as maintenance and vehicles and equipment are the non-recurring items and they are budgeted in the operating budget. So as stated earlier, everything having to do with utilities was put in the utility funds. These are the nonutility CIP items. The first two are in bold because they are also initiatives. That's all it means. I just don't want anybody to be confused. So, as we talked about, the cash items, nonutility, salt storage, 75,000. Talked about the senior building rehab, the city share of that quarter million dollar project is 50,000. Earlier this year, we talked about the Center Street reconstruction from Kane to Grand, approximately 830,000. The city share is roughly half. The rest comes from cars and federal funds. Per your direction, Phase 1 of the trails reconstruction and the Greenway pedestrian bridges were included in the budget as cash items. There is a debt item for the city hall roof replacement that is a 2016 CIP project, but again, nothing happens for budget outlay, money outlay until 2017. So all of this information is in the budget document in the appendix. When you review that information, please remember that only those projects in the 2016 column are included in this budget, except for the ones that I said the payments don't actually start until 17. They're in the 16 column, but there's no impact on this year's budget.
Yeah, Laura, could you explain really quickly, are you going to bond those particular projects that aren't going to be having debt service payments until 2017?
No, you'll bond them in 16, which payments won't start till the next year.
That's what I meant, you're going to bond them in 16.
Yeah. We'll be going through that process you have to go through, you have to authorize that as the governing body.
Sure.
So when we get ready to do that, we'll probably add it to something else and get good efficiency out of our heaven bruise here and then we'll bond those projects. And the reason why the city hall, that one's not really all that expensive, but it's a use-to-life thing. So we'll just spread it out.
Makes sense. All right, thanks.
So, just remember that the remaining four years of the CIP document are just for planning and budgeting and thinking ahead purposes. So this is a review of the 2015-16 CIP items that have been removed from the capital improvement program because they are unfunded. The law enforcement center, the public works parks facility, and also there is an associated parks maintenance building rehabilitation project that was in the CIP document for 2017, because if we don't first build another facility for parks to move to, we can't do anything with rehabilitating the parks maintenance building. We also removed, for now, Westside Park improvements. Also, as presented on June 1st by the city administrator, the streets rehabilitation program was removed from the budget because the intended funding for that program is the special sales tax initiative that's on the ballot for September 15th. If the sales tax passes, we will go through the process to amend the 2016 budget, creating that special fund and to collect revenues for the streets rehabilitation program. If the sales tax passes, you will have the option to move the previously but discussed pedestrian trails and greenway bridges to that funding stream, which will free up those budgeted funds for another use. And if those funds are freed up, you could consider cash funding Westside Park or anything else, but that would be an option. So these are all policy decisions that will be addressed later this fall after we know the results of the sales tax election. So what's next? Next week, budget hearings, and on August 3rd, you're scheduled to adopt the budget. So that ends the presentation of the 2016 recommended budget. However, I'm still standing here. So I know there's some things that you've been discussing with the city administrator. They are future budget policy decisions and they're not discussions to have tonight because they don't have anything to do with 2016 budget, but because priority-based budgeting is a cycle of continuous improvement and includes evaluating and monitoring and thinking ahead, I just want to mention a few things for you to think about for discussions that we'll be having soon. Topic one, the new property tax lid will change our ability to raise revenues for the projects such as funding facilitating economic development and the new facilities for the police department and the public works department. Moving to a consumption-based funding saws a leg off of a diversified funding stool and makes our revenues more volatile as we rely on consumer spending. So, something to think about, how will we mitigate sales tax leakage to competing cities? Along those lines, along the lines of the new property tax lid, other things to think about, revenues from new developments are not subject to the lid. Revenues needed for debt payments are not subject to the lid. So we may rethink how we do debt service. Gardner has its own utilities. Utility revenues are not subject to the lid. Huh? You're not agreeing? I thought you said something.
He's mouthing along with you.
He's mouthing, okay. So those are just things, those are kind of sub-points to the new changes in the property tax lid. And actually, there's actually a webinar next week because so many people are like, what's all going on? So I'll let you know more. Topic, second topic, if your special sales tax election does not pass, not pass, what will we do with our street needs? Third topic, this doesn't have anything to do with this year, but just keep thinking. Third topic, remembering that you have many infrastructure needs and the need for new facilities. What will you do with the mills we don't need for fire service, beginning in 2017? Remember, they're tied up for 16, so 17, what will you do with them? Because of this new tax lid law, if you roll them back, they're pretty much gone. Because if you want them back, it'll be subject to a public vote. So it's something to think about. One more topic. I'm full of topics. Just keep thinking. One more topic.
You said three, enough.
Okay, well, there's three, three flies. Another thing to think about is to go to a two-year budget. It's more progressive. It allows for better positioning for economic development because the development community wants certainty. It's more strategic because we plan in one year and implement in the next. And it shows greater commitment to seeing a project through to completion. And so that means it eliminates those unused plans sitting on a shelf because they died because there wasn't any commitment to fund them, but that kind of does away with that. Another little side note is design and engineering for major infrastructure projects are often included in the debt financing in the end. But if there wasn't any commitment to move forward with a project, you get to eat the design and engineering stuff. So a two-year budget would help with that. You're kind of already doing it. For example, we had the comprehensive plan last year and now we're following it up with the land development code this year. We had the economic development strategy last year. You did the economic incentive policy this year. So again, all of those things have nothing to do with the 2016 budget except for evaluate, monitor, adjust. So we're going to start planning, you be thinking, and the city administrator. So with that, now I'm done talking.
I'm guessing we're going to have plenty more time for questions and answers at the 20th and the August 5th meeting, but prepared to stand for some questions this evening.
So I sit, stand, go away? What would you like me to do?
Wherever you've got the best access to the information you need, unless it's all of them.
The carnival.
Yeah.
No, you can sit.
Okay.
Yeah, the point of attention that I have really more than, a great budget presentation, by the way, excellent work. I understand, I can see why you guys got that award, it was really well done. Well, it goes back to economic development incentives, and I've been getting a lot of input from people on both sides of the issue with regard to our funding of outside entities such as the EDC and Chamber. And I've got to start thinking about results-based, we're talking about planning for results and then looking at, you know, things from the standpoint of, you know, whether or not we meet our objectives or come short on our metrics. And I, and for the life of me, and I know we had talked about this before, and I had kind of been vassalting back and forth on the EDC budget. I haven't seen the amount of results from our relationship with the EDC that we had expected. Now, of course, they're going through a leadership transition, and there's some definite things that EDC wants to do on their end in order to be able to ramp up their organization to support their membership. But I have a little bit of a concern about handing the EDC $55,000 when we didn't get necessarily the amount of results for the $35,000 that we were giving them last year. And so I just wanted to have a little bit of a discussion about that. I understand that Greg's in the audience, and not to put the EDC on the spot, believe me, but I think that we need to have that discussion before we have our budget hearing, just to see what the sense of the council is on that.
Well, and I can understand that, and I'm sure that Greg would be willing to stand for questions, but if we were to do something, if he was, you think you can make it here on July 20th, Greg? It might be a better time for him to stand for questions. Now, I don't know if you've seen the new EDC website.
Yes.
But that was a very nice product that they managed to put out that is light years ahead of what they had previously. And for those of you that may or may not have, take a look. It's certainly a big upgrade. Other questions?
The other thing is, I think we had made that decision, and you were talking about those three or four or five things that you had at the end. We understand there's going to be an infrastructure gap, probably starting in 2016, early 2017, when we really have to start thinking about not only what's over here on this side of the interstate, but also potentially on the other side. And I'd like to know a little bit more, maybe we should have a workshop. I'm just going to throw it out there, a workshop, a work session, maybe in November, you know, around the time of the retreat, where we can bring in maybe some of our elected leaders, our senator, our representative, or senators and representatives, to talk about the impact of the property tax lid, because there's a lot of misunderstanding out there concerning how that works. There are other elected officials in the area, for example, who believe that this property tax lid is going to keep us from being able to realize abatements at the end of a 10-year cycle. That, to me, doesn't seem to be correct.
I know. That's what I was supposed to say. There is a webinar, that's what I mentioned, there's a webinar from the league. They're going to host it, I think it's the 21st, I already signed up for it. It's probably the first one, because I think the email just came in and I went right back out. But they're going to talk about it, and I'm sure Cheryl's got more city administrator stuff.
I just think that, I know that there's going to be some changes to this next year. I don't think that in its current form, it's too loosely written, and there's so many, you know, things that are being captured by this that probably shouldn't be. And so I know that there's going to be some review of this in legislature next year, and this doesn't really take effect until 2018.
Right, that's right. It's just things to think about.
But we do have to consider it now, I understand that. And I think that'd be a good idea for us to have some sort of work session that might include a couple of our elected leaders on that. That's all I had.
Tom, anything?
I have several things, but I'll wait till the 20th. But the one thing I had a question on was the electric development fund, the $3 million that sits there.
The electric capital replacement reserve fund.
Yeah, that's the one. So if most of our large items are bonded or financed, is that correct, with the electric?
Most of them.
So what is that, then what does the $3 million sit there for?
That's, I --
I mean, if --
That's a question for you and the UAC.
Okay. I mean, Lee, I don't know if you've got any --
I'm actually, yeah, we have any?
That actually predates me. We could probably ask Randy, he was there for that.
It's like a hot potato. If most of the things, the large items are going to be financed anyway, then why do we have that? We have a reserve fund there, correct? Which is a healthy reserve fund.
That's what, well, there's reserves, and your electric fund that we were talking about, it was 23%. That's plenty, and there are many, I don't want to call them small, because it doesn't sound small to people, but $100,000 and stuff, there's a lot of cash outlays for some of the smaller, because remember, your electric fund's the biggest fund in the city.
Right.
So a lot of things are paid for by cash, but when you start getting up to useful-life things, and things that are going to be 40 years worth of useful life, we debt service those, and you should. But it has nothing to do with that electric capital replacement reserve fund. We are hands-off.
Yeah, and some of that is new-day thinking, just because, you know, the Electric Utility Board was overseeing a quasi-independent governmental entity, and now it's all part of the city again. I'd also say that, you know, they've long paid for anything up to $1 million with cash as opposed to taking out bonds. But I think part of what we are wanting to discuss when it gets to the fall, after we get through the budget session, is talk with the finance staff, the city administrator, with the utility director, and probably even the UAC folks, about possibly further fund consolidation as opposed to individual funds. Again, trying to eliminate confusion and create some efficiency. And, you know, then it's going to be kind of a policy decision about, you know, and trust me when I tell you, I believe that there is a need for a capital equipment replacement fund. There's just no doubt in my mind.
I think the history of it is basically that when the UAC or the EUB was initially formed, there were a lot of surprises in the budget for big-ticket cash outlays for electric utility items, and I think they were looking at that and not wanting to be surprised. As a standalone entity, they wanted to be able to have a little more control over the budget in that way, and I think that's why they were initially established. But now that we're consolidated, I don't know that it's --
It just seems like a great deal of money. I mean, even if it was $1 million, that's, would seem like that would cover a lot of cash-type expenses.
It'll be a great question for --